Good evening. It is 5:30, so we're going to call the Toma City Council Meeting to Order. Remind you to turn your phone to silent or vibrate, then let's all stand due to the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chris, would you take the roll, please?
Councilmember Strebe?
Here.
Councilmember Berg?
Here.
Councilmember Dowby?
Here.
Councilmember Rowe?
Here.
Councilmember Stevens?
Here.
Mayor Lozio?
Here.
Items on the consent agenda, minutes from regular meeting number one on January 8, 2019, as presented. Acknowledgement of December financial report and payment of bills as submitted by the Finance Department. Reappointment of Bob McDowell to the Inspection Board of Review, term to expire 1/18/2024. Approve the appointment of Brad Davis to the position of Equipment Operator, Street Cleaning Department, effective February 4, 2019. Approve the purchase of one 2020 Ford Utility Police Interceptor vehicle from Stivers Ford of Waukees, Iowa, in the amount of $34,473, and the purchase and installation of the police equipment necessary for basic police functions in the amount of $11,700. Setting February 5, 2019, as the date of a public hearing on the plan, specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost for the Alta Vista Reconstruction Project. Resolution number 6, 2019, setting February 5, 2019, as the date of a public hearing on Atoma Transit's consolidated funding application. Resolution number 9, 2019, providing for the financial support of the Area 15 Regional Planning Commission for fiscal year 2019-2020. Resolution number 12, 2019, authorizing the destruction of certain records according to the Code of Iowa 2015 as amended and the Iowa Municipal Records Retention Manual. Beer and/or liquor applications for Fairway Stores Incorporated at 1325 Albia Road, Dollar General Store #7179 at 721 North Quincy Avenue, Dollar General Store #2898 at 921 East Main Street, Cedar Creek Golf Course at 13120 Angle Road with outdoor service area, Recovery Room at 1805 West Second Street, The Keg at 622 Church Street with outdoor service area, all applications pending final inspections.
Your Honor, I'd make the motion to approve the consent agenda with the removal of item number eight to be voted on separately.
Second. Thank you.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dowby?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Okay, since the motion was to exclude item eight, we'll need to do a separate vote on item eight.
Can I read it again?
Yes.
Okay, resolution number 9, 2019, providing for the financial support of Area 15 Regional Planning Commission for fiscal year 2019-2020.
Move Resolution Number 9 as presented, Your Honor.
Thank you, Matt.
Second.
Thank you, Skip. Any questions? Okay, take the roll.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Abstain.
Councilmember Dowby?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Items seen on our agenda, need a motion for tonight's agenda?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dowby?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
This time, I'd like to call on City Administrator Andy Morris and can give us a report on several items. Andy, you have the floor.
Very good. Thank you, Mayor. The items listed, I'll just go through these in the order that they're listed. What I try to do is give council a perspective of items that will come to the fore at the following council meeting. The meeting that'll follow this will be on the 5th of February. The very first item you see listed is an airport update. I will have, we have financials right now. I'll make sure and generate, get those out to the council members well in advance of that meeting. Chris Cobbler, the Airport Maintenance Supervisor, will be with us that evening again to give council an airport update. The next item you see listed is the Blake's Branch Sewer Separation Project Discussion. Larry Seals, our Public Works Director, will be speaking to council the following week. That'll be on the 12th of February. Again, that meeting will be, I'm assuming like all the others, that will be at 5:30. Larry will simply give an update, Mr. Seals will give an update in light of the fact that will be a special meeting, there will be no legislative decisions made at that time. The next item you see is the Atoma Public Library Annual Report, speaking with Sonia. That meeting, I should have listed the date there, that will also take place at the February 5 meeting. She will appear before council and give that update. The next two items almost go in tandem, the Beat Sound System Discussion. That's going to be a work session that will be on the 29th of this month, the 29th on a Tuesday. That will be at 5:30. The next item you see is, in addition to that, continued discussion of the fiscal year budget discussions. There will be a presentation tonight, as you see on your agenda. That will be the first regular meeting council will have to consider the budget. I just want to let you know, those will go in tandem. The Beat Sound System is an item that we're going to have first, if it's all right with council, that'll be the first item. The second item then will be that budget presentation on the 29th as well. And again, no votes will be taken at that meeting, but we'll have those lined up. Again, I'll make sure and get the information on the financials out to the city council members for that meeting regarding the airport update on the 5th. Mayor, that's all I have on those items unless you or council members have any questions or comments.
Any questions for Andy? Okay. Item E, we have citizens that want to discuss an item that's on the agenda, and we've received a number of those, so when those items come up, we'll call you up to identify yourself and make your comments. Item F, tonight is the beginning of our budget presentation, so I'd like to call on City Administrator Andy Morris again to get us started, and I think you're going to be tag teamed with Bob.
That's correct. Very good. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Matt. I'll give a couple of brief outlines and set forth the discussion on the budget. This is an item that council has done on a fairly regular basis over the years, and I'm going to give some highlights, and then, as you just said, Bob J., our Finance Director, will step forth and fill in some of the particulars. I just want to highlight a couple of items. First of all, as you well know, the discussions we've had regarding the general fund and funding, that is one of our more challenged areas, but I would argue that staff has done an appropriate job in putting together certain expenditure reductions. We've made cuts to the budget, and I know council, for the most part, has memorialized those. But just to put this in perspective, the general fund, starting off this, the next fiscal year in 1920, the budget deficit is approximately $509,000. We are drawing from the fund balance and cuts in the general fund to help sustain that. That gives us a coverage ratio, still a pretty good ratio of about 19.1%, but just to let you know, that $509,000 is drawn from the fund balance, and the city council has done that previously, but just to put that in perspective. It's also worth noting that salaries and benefits constitute about 73% of overall general fund expenditures, so you're, Bob, and he'll go over this in a minute, but that is charts and graphs, I think, do a very, very good job of setting forth where those expenditures are, but certainly personnel is the lion's share of where those exist. Staff has recommended an increase in the overall levy, increasing that 51 cents, and that brings the total levy to $22.45. That will be something the council will need to vote on to memorialize at a future date. I don't believe that'll take place at our budget meetings, I think that will take place at a regularly scheduled council meeting, so council will need to do that at that time. If you have any questions or comments, please let us know. The total budget for the City of Atoma stands at approximately $57 million. The general fund is approximately $15 million. The last item I would like to mention, and I appreciate the mayor pointing this out, I want to give a great deal of credit to Bob J., to Kristi McDowell, the Finance Department and their staff, and their diligent work in putting the budget together. As you know, it's a rather long and arduous document, but they've done a good job of not only consolidating that, but putting some options in front of council, which I believe are worthy of funding, and some of those cuts, hopefully, council will agree to as well. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I'll turn it back over to you, and then you can introduce Mr. J.
Good to have Bob J., our Finance Director, here, and he can walk us through this and give us any highlights he thinks are appropriate, and we surely want your input, Bob, in terms of, you know, this was a difficult process this year.
Thank you. Yeah, yes, it was. I want to try to remind everybody that a budget is our best guess at this time. I was talking with the chief here, and right now, it looks like he hasn't hired, filled one of the spots, it's been open for a year, so there's $50,000 that won't be spent in the current year budget. So, we go through with based off everything, that if all the planets align, this is how it's going to end up, and normally, and especially with the Police Department, if they can't fill a spot, usually it won't, so. I prepared, gave you guys two sheets of paper here, two segments of paper. One is what will be the presentation, and the other is what this presentation is based off of, so it has more information on it than what the general slides do. So for the first slide, we'll be looking at the general fund levy, and there's some, unfortunately, for the, didn't line up, didn't stay lined up, so that's a software issue there. But we're looking at a 21, or 51 cent increase in the overall levy. 810 for the general funds remain the same, and everything else, basically, has remained consistent with the previous years. The debt service fund, we've had an increase in fund balance there, so we're, based off of, when we do issue, we issue, we get premiums, and also, we issue enough money to pay for the costs, so those costs are, haven't been up to what the issuance was for, so we're digging into that and reducing that levy by 50 cents. And then, we are increasing, or asking to increase, the trust and agency levy by, basically, $1, so the net increase for the levy is 51 cents. The next one shows a history since 2001 of our levies, and as you can see, we approached, oh, 22 cents there in 2007, 2008, but the valuation was much lower, so I'm assuming the expenditures were much lower there, too. But that gives a history of what we've requested and been approved for, so. The next levy shows what it would cost homeowner for somebody that has assessed value of $100,000. This year, the rollback went up 1.5%, I believe. It went from 55.62% to 56.92%. Commercial property rollbacks remained at 90%, and this is the fourth year for the multi-residential rollback, where it dropped to 75% from 78.5. In a couple more years, it will be in line with the residential rollback. So, everyone, if you've got a budget, and each one of the different funds has a narrative in it that explains some of the larger and more significant changes in those items. So for a house with assessed value of $100,000, once the calculations are done, the city share would be 1,278. The others, which consist of the city assessor and the state of Iowa, and some of the smaller lending authorities, $89, the school, $835 in the county, $454. And then, this next page shows what the cost of that $1,278, the citizens, each citizen is paying for, based off of population of 25,003 people. So if each individual, they're paying taxes of $418 for a police officer, $260 for the fire department, or for the police department, not a police officer, $18 for the cemetery, $57 for the library, $46 for the transit, parks and public property, $47, public works $55, the Bridgeview Center and the beach, $8, retiree insurance $83, insurance in general $45, debt service $178, and other miscellaneous $63. Now, we're getting into city tax dollars for FY 2020, and it shows, excuse me, how do I get this around here? The breakdown of where the money is allocated. 33% would be for police, cemetery 1%, and this is for the property tax dollars. Library 4%, fire 20%, transit 4%, parks 4%, public works 4%, beach 1%, retiree insurance 7%, insurance 3%, debt service 14%, and others 5%. And on the second set of information I gave you, it has a breakdown of what the other is on there, and that's planning, health, and engineering. Now, budgeted revenue is going to be $50,801,000, and that's broken out by source for you. Property taxes $13,281,000, TIF funds $801,000, local option sales tax $3.2 million, intergovernmental charges and services $8.4 million, a million in bonds, what they call money in properties, $1,116,000, various services $17,497,000, and other $4,896,000, which consists of the utility franchise fee, hotel motel tax, license and permit, special assessment, miscellaneous. And miscellaneous consists of special revenue funds for federal grants and road use tax. Budgeted tax revenue shows, out of the general fund, how much money is being allocated to, or is being generated to the different areas. Basically, it follows the tax levy. So we have 4.9 million for the general fund, 5.7 million for the trust and agency fund, and trust and agency fund handles all the health insurance and fringe benefits for all the employees in the general fund, plus, I believe, five other departments. Emergency levy $128,000, $129,000 rounded up, the library $166,000, insurance $350,000, the transit levy $497,000, the debt service levy $1.9 million, and the event center levy Budget expenditures are next, and these show a total by category, which we report on our budget worksheets and the budget form that's submitted to the state. Public safety $9,482,000, public works $7,602,000, capital projects $13,493,000, recreation $2,466,000, debt service $4,043,000, business activities $15,316,000, and other $4,717,000. Another consists of the general government, so mayor, council, city manager, clerk, treasurer, finance, city hall and the buildings, the insurance tort liability, and other government retiree insurance, the health and regulations and inspections, economic development, and housing and urban renewal. And then we do a calculation showing a net expenditure amount where the different departments in the general fund generate revenue, and then what's left is the net amount that's being, having to be paid on their behalf. Police, or for the net expenditures, account for 53%, the fire accounts 33%, parks 6%, the beach is minimal, zero in fact, and then other, which consists of planning, health, and engineering, 8% of the budget. And then we throw in here a comparison to give you guys information as to how we're doing compared to previous years for the street expenditures, and we're down on street construction this year, but we are not far off on the street maintenance, that we continue to do so. The next chart shows another thing that consumes a lot of money in the different funds and the different budgets, electric and fuel comparisons. For electricity, we're actually down a little bit as far as the budget, about $23,000, but we're looking at a total expenditure of about $1.3 million for electrical, and for fuel, The next chart shows our current debt service, or projected debt service for FY 20, and then, for the next two years, what we anticipate paying out based off of debt that we have incurred, year-to-date or will incur. This also includes this 2019 CIP. So you're looking at total payout FY 20, $3.8 million, FY 21, $3.4 million, and FY 22, $2.9 million. Next slide shows capital projects, and we have $1.4 million for the sewer, $3.3 million for the airport, $700,000 for parks, $4.4 million for streets, and Bridgeview Center project $130,000, for a total of almost $10 million for capital projects. Next slide shows the business activities, and in it, we have transit, solid waste, the sewer department, Bridgeview Center, the health insurance, and equipment purchases fund. That $15,315,000 is the total expended. Transit, we'll be looking at $1,197,000, solid waste $2 million, sewer $6.6 million, Bridgeview Center $1,254,000, and health insurance $3,756,000, and we're looking to purchase $481,000 in equipment this year. I'd like to thank Kristi McDowell. She's the brains behind the brawn. She's the one that sits down and puts all this information together, and from all our chicken scratches, and puts them into a readable and workable format, so, and also through the department heads. Once again, they came in with no-nonsense budgets. We've, since I've been here, we've requested that they come in with what they need to operate, and they, that's what they have. The first year here, it was a little wild. We cut millions of dollars from the budget, but most of those were things that were never were going to happen anyway, so most everybody now comes in with what they need to operate based off a history of what they do, and we go back, and for our budget, we go back and look at the previous three years, so, when we do our analysis, so. Ending up, I don't have a sheet for this or a slide, thank you, Matt, but we're looking to have an ending fund balance of $2.9 million, $94,000 for the general fund, $835,000 for the debt service, of which $400,000 is receivable from the Water Works for their portion of debt service that we incurred on their behalf, $3.9 million in the sales tax, $4.5 million in road use. We have negative fund balance in the TIF totals, but that's because we advanced money years ago for the Colts District, and that is getting repaid over a 20-year period. Employee benefits fund $495,000, other special revenue funds, this totals now of $2 million. Sewer construction fund $46,000 negative, other capital projects $1.5 million, solid waste $2.4 million, sewer fund $5.3 million, Atoma Transit $8.5 million, or $857,000, I'm sorry, other enterprise funds $1.8 million, health insurance fund $3.2 million, and various permanent funds we have to retain, $871,000 for a total of $30,659,788. Beginning balance is estimated to be, or the ending balance for this year, $36,980,000. So, that's all I have.
Mr. Mayor, I just had a couple of quick questions for Bob, and I want to obviously turn this over to councilmembers. Bob, this is something we talked about, as I recall, last year, and this year comes up again, but if I'm correct, and correct me if I'm mistaken, one of the ways that we use legally, legally, I might add, to help supplement the general fund, is one of the most burdened funds. One of them is the employee benefits fund, Fund 112, and if my memory serves me correctly, that is largely for salaries and benefits, so when you indicate here, that levy is going to increase a dollar. I'm assuming, then, by extension, does that help lessen the burden a little bit on the general fund?
Correct. We are budgeting $3.9 million to go into the general fund to offset the various costs and increases for health insurance, retirement. It's the fringe benefits that it's for, it doesn't cover salaries, but it does, we are allowed to use it for the fringe benefits.
Is there a statutory limit on how high that can go?
The trust and agency?
Yeah.
No, there is not.
Sure. And then, one last question, Mayor, and I'll turn this back over to you. Sorry about this. The emergency fund, that's, if my memory serves me correctly, this was one that we discussed last year as well. Is that another one that provides, by extension, mathematically, some relief to the general fund?
Yes, the money that's generated in there is transferred by law to the general fund. We do not levy the full amount, the levy there is 27 cents, but we have to show, since we're transferring $300,000 from the local option sales tax, we have to show tax relief, and that's how we do so.
Very well. Thank you. That's all I had, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. I would really encourage the council to go through the booklet that has been prepared. It's very thorough, very complete. I did sit in on most of the budget hearings with Bob and Kristi and Andy, and I have to tell you that they went through line item by line item, and it's a very tedious job and it's not much fun, but they have good records, and as Bob just mentioned, they go back three years and look at their past experience, and I felt the staff came in with realistic requests, which sometimes they ask for the sky, but this year, excuse me, they were very realistic and it helped the budgeting process. So, as you go through this, recall, too, that we just got our annual audit completed, and it was a clean audit, and I think that's, again, a tribute to Bob and Kristi, all the people that helped them do that. It's going to be a tough year with the shortfall that we were talking about, so if you have some ideas or suggestions, please make us aware of those, and we'll try to go through those in more detail as we go through this special session on the 29th. Okay? All right, let's move on to item G, and I think Phil is going to, Phil Bergmeyer, our Assistant Engineer, is going to come up and cover that, so. Kristi, would you give us a update on that?
This is the time, place, and date set for a public hearing on the plan, specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost for the water pollution control facility primary clarifier valve replacement project.
All right, it's a, this is a project to replace three valves. These valves are used to drain out our primary clarifier tanks. You can see on the, the ledger pointer will show very well on there, but the three red wheels on there are the, are used to open and close the valves, and you got three stands there, the valves, or the wheels are connected to shafts that go down in the ground to connect to the valves. The piping you see above ground is air piping, used to pump air into the clarifier tanks to keep them going septic. On the left-hand side is the maintenance garage, and the, the primary clarifier tanks themselves are the right-hand side, and there's about 10 feet, 9 inches between the tanks and the maintenance garage, and we're digging down 18 feet to get to those valves. We're going to go to the next slide. So here we got a cross-section of the area. You can see the stands kind of sticking up above the ground right there. On the way down, the contractor's going to have to tear out the stands, to let they get rid of the slab that's on the ground. The big circle off to the left right there is the 30-inch influit line for cell one. That will have to be shored up and stay active the whole time. The air piping above ground will have to be shored up, it'll have to stay active the whole time. About nine feet down, there's a drain line for the scum trough, which is About nine feet down, there's a drain line for the scum trough, which is, when the water goes into the clarifier tanks, some material floats to the top, and there's skimmers that skim that off. And that's the drain line for that, so they'll have to dig down past that. A few feet farther down there, about 12 feet down, there are three lines coming up from under the primary clarifiers, and those are used to pump out any solids that settle out in the clarifier tanks. And those will have to stay active and operational the whole time. And then finally, once you get past the foundation for the maintenance building on the left and get below the foundation for the tanks on the right, about 18 feet down, there's three valves down there. And there'll be a lot of shoring of the trench to get down there, a lot of hand digging, a lot of vacuum excavation. So it's a really simple project, but it's really hard to get to, and that's why it's being led as a separate project. And like I said, everything has to be shored up, and all those pipes will have to be supported because they all have to stay operational this whole time. We also included a bid alternate for building an access vault, so that these ever have to be replaced again, we can just climb down the ladder and replace them. I don't know why it wasn't done back in '71 when these were first put in there, but hopefully the prices are right and we can do it this time. Any questions?
Well, this is a public hearing on this item. If there's anyone in the audience that wants to address this particular item, now's your chance to address this particular. Seeing none, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dowby?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Resolution Number 5, 2019, approving the plan, specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost for the water pollution control facility primary clarifier valve replacement project. Recommendation, pass and adopt Resolution Number 5, 2019.
Is there a motion?
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second. Thank you. Take the roll.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dowby?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
This is the time, place, and date set for a public hearing on the sale of city-owned property located at 108 East Court.
Good evening, Kevin, you have the floor.
Thank you, Your Honor. Brothers Holding Trust Company offered the city $250 for this vacant lot at 108 East Court. The lot's adjacent to two lots owned by the trust, and they intend to combine all three lots into one. One of those lots contains a placarded home, which the company does intend to repair. Vacant lot will be used for yard for the remaining property.
Okay. This is also a public hearing. If there's anyone in the audience who wants to address this item. Seeing none, entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, I, sorry, I've got just one question. I may have stepped in at the inappropriate time, but just a quick question on this. Evan, if my memory serves me correctly, I believe the city has a policy that when we're talking about yards that are vacant, they still have to be maintained. Does this property fall underneath that panoply?
Yes, they'll be maintaining it as yard for the home after they fix it, so quote "green space."
All right, thank you, Mayor.
I have one question too, Kevin. Do they have a game plan to repair this house, a schedule of any sort?
Yes, they'll be making a schedule of repairs, as with any placarded home with their building officials, and following that schedule of repairs as usual in our normal placarding process.
Thank you.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dowby?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Resolution Number 7, 2019, accepting the offer and approving the sale of city-owned property located at 108 East Court to Brothers Holding Trust for the sum of $250. Recommendation, pass and adopt Resolution Number 7, 2019.
Is there a motion?
Move the recommendation as presented, Your Honor.
Second.
Thank you. Take the roll.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dowby?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you.
This is the time, place, and date set for a public hearing on the sale of city-owned property located at 1543 Mabel Street.
Go ahead, Kevin.
Thank you, Your Honor. Alyssa Welch offered the city $250 for the vacant lot at 1543 Mabel Street. It's the buyer's intention to construct a commercial building on this lot. The property is in an I-1 zoning district, which would be light industrial. The property will be transferred by quitclaim deed when the buyer paying all costs of conveyance, including property taxes that may be owed.
This is also a public hearing. If there's anyone who wants to address this item. Seeing none, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Yeah.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dowby?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Resolution Number 8, 2019, accepting the offer and approving the sale of city-owned property located at 1543 Mabel Street to Alyssa Welch for the sum of $250 for the purpose of constructing a commercial building. Recommendation, pass and adopt Resolution Number 8, 2019.
Move the recommendation as presented, Your Honor. Second.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Any questions? Take the roll.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dowby?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you.
This is the time, place, and date set for a public hearing on the plan, specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost for the Beach Phase 4 Slide Restoration Project 2019.
Good evening, Jean, you have the floor.
Okay, thank you, Your Honor. Contract A consists of performing designated repairs to the 32-inch enclosed slide, 42-inch open flume slide, the speed slide, and the indoor-outdoor water slides. Contract B consists of performing designated repairs and refinishing of the steel supporting structure for all the slides and the slide tower. Bids will be received and opened by the City of Atomoa on February 13, 2019. The bid report and bid award recommendation will be presented at the City Council Meeting on February 19, 2019, or at a later date as determined by staff. Actual work in this project will begin when spring temperatures cooperate, and the project is expected to be completed by May 17, 2019. The engineers' opinion of cost is Contract A, $120,000; Contract B, $35,000.
This is also a public hearing. If there's anyone who wants to address this particular item. Seeing none, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved. Second.
Thank you.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dowby?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Resolution Number 14, 2019, approving the plan, specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost for the Beach Phase 4 Slide Restoration Project 2019. Recommendation, pass and adopt Resolution Number 14, 2019.
Is there a motion?
Move the recommendation as presented, Your Honor. Second.
Thank you. Any questions? Take the roll.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dowby?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
This is the time, place, and date set for a public hearing on the appeal of Atomoa Police Chief's order dated January 9, 2019, to remove a dog from the city limits pursuant to Atomoa Municipal Code, Chapter 7, Section 11, and the possession of Elizabeth Liz Tekel under the control or on the premise of her property at 901 Chester Avenue, Atomoa.
Good evening, Chief, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Atomoa Police Officer Patterson investigated an incident involving a medium-sized terrier cross named Rusty, owned by Elizabeth Tekel of 901 Chester Avenue in Atomoa. On July 1, 2019, Rusty bit a 14-year-old girl on the legs, causing injuries that required stitches. She is walking down an alley at the time and did not provoke the dog. The owner claims the girl was cutting through their yard. On December 26, 2018, an individual who was invited to the residence at 901 Chester Avenue was bitten by the dog. While in the residence, the dog jumped up and bit the visitor on the arm and leg, resulting in medical expenses. The visitor alleged that he was advised to lie as to what dog, which dog bit him. A notice was sent to the owner, Elizabeth Tekel, on January 9, 2019, requiring her to remove the dog from the city limits within three days of the notice. The owner is appealing the police chief's order. Attached hereto is a copy of the notice dated January 9, 2019. The owner has installed a dog pen in the backyard and plans to put up a privacy fence in the spring. The owner indicates Rusty will not be unrestrained and has purchased a muzzle for the dog when he is outside. And attached is the appeal notice and a letter of explanation for the council. So this is an appeal before the council. Joni might want to add something to that, but I'm suggesting that since this has been appealed by Ms. Tekel, that she be given the first chance to speak to council and tell you about her appeal. And then after that, I can answer any questions.
We have, I believe Ms. Tekel's here. I think we have three of them.
Is Ms. Tekel here? Okay.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Tekel. Thank you. I'm here today for my dog Rusty. Rusty had been a huge part of our family for seven years now, and I'm here to appeal the decision that was made labeling him a vicious dog. Rusty is by no means a vicious dog. I am not making excuses for either incident, and I feel bad that they happened. After the first one, in which the girl did come running up the alley behind our house, startled Rusty, and he bit at her. We have made several changes since then. Like, we built a dog pen outside for the dogs. They are inside dogs, but when we take, when we're outside and they're outside with us, they're in the dog pen. We always take them out on leashes, they are never loose. This spring, we already had plans to put up a privacy fence around our backyard. The second incident occurred, the man entered, excuse me, I'm sorry, I'm nervous. The man entered my house through the back door, which he did not knock on, and let himself inside our back porch area. I was not home at the time, I was at work. My fiance, Brandon Thompson, was home. He was, we'd been remodeling our basement, he was working on the basement. He had been in inside and outside, so neither door was locked. He said it happened so fast, Rusty seen the gentleman on the back porch, jumped up, bit at him, and ran. Not once did I deny Rusty bit this person. I even paid all of his medical bills, but Rusty was not being vicious, he was being protected of his home. This person was a stranger to my dog and had only been inside my house a few other times, and all the other visits, he was outside in my driveway or I would go to his home. I have now started locking my backstorm door, even though people always knock on it before entering, but with this incident, I will take all precautions so this does not happen ever again. I have documents here from my vet at Pipestone, where Rusty has been going for several years, stating that they have never shown any signs of aggression in the many years we have been taking him there, and also that all the times we have kennelled the dogs there, they have never had a problem with Rusty. The vet even stated Rusty is a bright and friendly dog. What this comes down to is that Rusty is not a vicious dog and an important part of our family. He is great with my daughter, as well as my twin nieces. I haven't, I would never have a dog around them if I thought for one minute they were in any danger of getting bit. I also have a handicapped father, and Rusty is always gentle with him. Rusty interacts well with our other dog, cat, as well as our bird. Not once has he gotten in a fight with any other animal. We will do whatever it takes to keep Rusty and make sure that this never happens again. I brought some pictures of my dog and of our dog pen that we built, if the council could look at them. They just show Rusty, pictures of Rusty at home, and there's a picture in there where we took him to Prairie Hills Assisted Living, where he went around to all the residents, and they just loved him. I also have a letter here from my neighbor stating that they have never had any problems with our dogs. My dog has never shown any signs of aggression towards him or his dog. And then I have a letter from my sister-in-law stating about our dog, also if the council could look at it, but...
Okay, we have several others, so why don't we go ahead and call them up? Amy Crowe?
I would like to take a moment to introduce myself and give you some background on me. I'm Amy Crowe. I run Paws &amp; Claws Rescue and Rehab, a 501(c)(3) animal rescue in rural Waplo County, better known as P&amp;C. P&amp;C specializes in large commercial breeding dogs, aka puppy mill dogs and bully breeds that have been deemed dangerous per city code. Most of the dogs that we have in our care need rehabilitation due to behavioral setbacks before being successfully adopted into loving families or placed in sanctuary care. I am currently working towards becoming a certified dog trainer and behavioralist with Certification Council for professional dog trainers. I have rehabbed well over 250 dogs each year. I was contacted by Beth Tino Sunday evening, January 20, 2019, asking if I remembered a dog that she had fostered for Heartland Humane back in 2014. Beth at this time showed me pictures of a black and white terrier dog she had called Rusty, with her children, and a video of her daughter, who was five years old at the time, holding the dog's paws, dancing and running in her home. I stated to Beth I did not remember Rusty and that he must have been adopted before I became the director of Heartland in July 2014. Beth confirmed Rusty had been in her home from February 20, 2014, to March 12, 2014. Beth then explained that Rusty's family was facing, losing their family member due to a bite. Beth then explained how she had fostered him, and I asked Beth to reach out to Rusty's family. That evening, Liz Tekel reached out to me about Rusty and the incident that happened in their home in December 2018. Liz explained prior to the incident that there was an incident with a neighbor girl that ran through their yard and scared Rusty, causing him to nip. Liz explained that after this, they built a pen for Rusty and his companion to safely enjoy the outside without causing any harm again. Liz went on to explain the second bite occurrence was someone that had been in her home once before knocked on the door and entered without her fiance knowing the person had entered their home, and Rusty bit the said person on the arm. Liz explained the normal routine for answering the door was to put the dogs in the bedroom before answering the door, and then letting them out after the person had entered their home. By doing this, it allowed the dogs reassurance that this person was welcome in their home. Liz stated, since the bite occurred, they have changed their routine with Rusty and his companion to ensure it didn't happen again. They had purchased a large crate to house the dogs in the home when no one was home, and then by locking both doors at all times, preventing someone to walk in uninvited. I met with Liz and Rusty yesterday, January 21, 2019, at 534 North Hazel Street and Agency, where Rusty has been staying since he was ordered out of town. I was greeted at the door by Liz, Rusty in hand, along with a large lab named Cooper. I stood in the doorway as Cooper barked and sniffed me. Liz put Rusty on the ground as she spoke to me, as she spoke to Rusty, telling him that was okay, and as I told her, he was okay. During all of this, Rusty did not growl or bark at me, however, he did look at Liz for reassurance. Rusty came over and sniffed, then went back to Liz as we spoke for about a half an hour. During this time, there were construction workers working on the home that Rusty had not met prior to staying at the home. Rusty had no interest in what they were doing as they came and went. Rusty, for the majority of the time, spent his time on the couch. I asked Liz if I could take him for a short walk by myself to see how he interacted with me. I took Rusty up the block and back. At that time, I got down on Rusty's level, twice saying his name as he came towards me. I petted him with no signs of aggression. As I walked Rusty back to the house, he went under one of the trucks that was parked in the driveway. At that time, I touched his back end without speaking to him. Rusty was undisturbed by this. Rusty went back inside and was happy to see Liz as he wagged his tail. I then continued to visit with Liz while Rusty fell asleep on the back of the couch. Rusty did not move when I left. My personal observation of Rusty is that he is a loyal, friendly, and laid-back dog that values his family. Rusty looked at Liz for reassurance when I entered the residence where Rusty has been residing. The day the second bite happened, I feel Rusty was only doing what any dog would do when provoked, and that is simply defending not only his family, but his home. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and Council. My name is Melissa Long, and I'm here on behalf of Liz, and I have a letter from Beth Tino and some pictures that she has sent in support of Liz. This is a picture of Rusty. This is picture of Rusty, I'm sorry, this is picture of Rusty with her kids, and this is her letter. Rusty was an animal control dog that was not claimed by his owner. My family saw this photo on the Animal Control Facebook page and wanted to pay his bailout fee. My children pooled their money together to save this pup and made a donation to HHS. He was then transferred to Heartland Humane, where all the animal control dogs go when not claimed. They need to remain in isolation for seven to 10 days before moving to the adoption floor. Once he arrived, we couldn't wait to meet him. We fell in love instantly and decided to foster him. He was at our house from February 20th, 2014, to March 12th, 2014. Rusty is an awesome dog. He played so well with my children and was mostly potty-trained. At the time, my husband was not ready to let us adopt a dog, so we did our best to take photos and get to know Rusty. I shared photos and his story, along with his personality, et cetera. We posted on Facebook, looking for a home for Rusty, adoptable through Heartland Humane. Within only a few days, he had interest. Liz commented that she was very interested in Rusty. We brought him to several meet and greets at Heartland Humane. They fell in love and adopted him. She updated me for a while with photos on how he was doing. My kids were ages five, 12, and 14 while Rusty was with us. I can provide many photos of Rusty with my kids, as well as videos of him playing and dancing with my youngest. Rusty has never shown any signs of aggression at all. Thank you, Beth Tino. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who wants to address the council? Okay, at this point, um...
Your honor, I also believe there are, two of the victims are here tonight that wanted to speak. One is Tony Ynsic.
They've been given the opportunity, and they did not fill out a sheet, so unless they step up, I'm going to move on.
They would be here on behalf of the police department. They're not here to speak at the public forum. They're going to be our witnesses if we need them. And I do want to ask them if they do want to go ahead and, they have come, and I can ask them if they would like to come up and speak. They don't have to, but if they'd like to.
Tony Ynsic, 908 Albee Road, Otomo, Iowa. I have always been raised to knock on a door before I enter, so I'm just telling you that I did not walk in. I was invited in. Brandon was there, and when the dog bit me, he kicked it away, and he said, "Stupid dog." Liz was not there. I think the dog is completely different when Liz is around because they have a longer Other than that, I mean, I hate it happen, but I'm not a thief that goes in breaking in people's houses. So I just want to let you know, I wanted to clear my name on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Hannah LePointe, and back in July of 2018, I had a job of mowing my grandmother's lawn during the summer. And after I had mowed her lawn one day, I was walking down the back alley back to my house, and I heard barking, and I looked down. There were suddenly two dogs in front of me that I later found out were carriers, and I said hi, because I normally do when I see a dog, and they started biting me. And there was a young girl by the house where the dogs lived, and she was yelling for the dogs, and they won't go back to her, and I suddenly screamed, and they stopped biting me, and they ran over to her, and I ran home. And my aunt took me to the hospital, where I got four stitches on my left leg, and I had other bites on my right one.
Okay, thank you very much. Chief, do you want to add anything?
Your honor, if you don't mind, since this is an appeal of Ms. Tekel, I don't have any other evidence or anything like that to put on here, and we're pretty informal. So I would suggest that we maybe let Ms. Tekel, if she has any more to say in response to any of these people that spoke tonight, we let her do that, and then I'll take a minute.
Liz, is there anything you want to add?
I guess all I have to add is, I mean, after the first incident, of course, we felt bad, went to the house and apologized. That's why we built the dog pen, to make sure that never happened again. Our dogs are never loose. After, of course, the thaw breaks, brown ground, you know, when we can, we're going to build a privacy fence around the backyard. Our dogs are never loose. Every time we come home, we lock the door. When we're not home, we have a crate they're in. I mean, we, we love our dogs, and I really, you know, I hate to see them go. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, at this point, council, if there are any questions you want to ask the chief or any of the people that testified, your opportunity to clarify. So Victor?
Mr. Ynsic, if I may ask you a question. When Ms. Crowe was up here at the end of her, what she spoke and told us about, she said that Rusty acted in a manner that any dog would if provoked. And I want to ask you, would you consider what you did in walking into the house to be provoking the dog?
I knocked on the door. My arms were out my side. Brandon said, "Come in." I walked in. That's all I did.
Okay. And then we have in our paperwork here a line that says that you were advised to not tell the truth about which dog bit you, and I wanted to ask you if that was true and why you were asked to do that.
It was true. It was Rusty the dog. Liz sent me a text. I have the text. She says, "Don't tell them who owns a dog, but tell them it has its shots."
Okay, thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Any other comments or questions from council?
Your honor, and maybe chief, you might be able to answer this, and maybe Chris that can answer this. Is the dog, is Rusty currently registered, licensed by the city?
Yes, I believe so.
And current on the shots?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Yes.
Chief, have you or Officer Williams been to the home and seen the pen that was constructed?
No, I have not.
I have been to the home. It is a, like, I think it's like a six or eight by eight kennel, chain link kennel.
And how tall is that kennel?
It's probably, I think it's about six foot tall.
Okay.
And I have been to the house. I've seen the dog through the window, so I've not really dealt with the dog personally, but just seen it through the window.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Your honor, just real quick here, this is not a good situation. It's unfortunate. I've got two dogs of my own. I can't imagine having mine taken away, so it's very emotional for Ms. Tekel. I feel sorry that she's going through this. I think from the city council's respect, they, you need to look at this as a risk management type situation. The dog has bitten two people. I think both of them can be considered unprovoked, and so this is just a risk management situation. You've had a dog that has bitten two people, and we're taking on risk if we allow the dog to be in the city. That's why we do this removal letter. So there is some liability there. I don't know if Joni has any more to add to that, but that's what we need to look at is, this is a liability if we allow the dog to stay in town.
Your honor, I have one question. The last girl that spoke, I couldn't tell what she said. Did she say she was bit, or?
Yeah, she was bitten, I think, twice.
On both legs.
On both legs.
That's the third person?
No, that's, there's two, there's been two documented bites. There's actually been a third, but we can't prove that it was actually this dog.
Thank you.
Your honor, I did provide photographs with the permission of the guardian for the young lady, so there are photographs that you've seen of that bite that required stitches.
Any other questions or comments?
Your honor, chief, you said that there was a third bite that you just couldn't, was that, that was a reported bite? You just couldn't, was there no physical evidence of the bite, or did somebody not talk, or how did that go?
The person who provided the information was a person who was maybe challenged, I would put it that way. And so we could not, there was some inconsistencies that just made it to where we would not consider it, that we could prove it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we're to the point where you have a recommendation?
We close the public hearing.
Is there anybody else that wants to address? Okay, then let's move to the recommendation, Chris, if you'd read that for us.
I don't think we voted to close the public hearing.
Close the public hearing.
It's an appeal. It's not a public hearing as such. I guess we can close it if you want, but everybody's had ample opportunity to speak to the council. We've given three or four different opportunities, so, okay.
So recommendation is deny the appeal of Elizabeth Tekel.
Is there a motion to that effect?
Your honor, I move the recommendation is presented.
Second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Any further discussion? Okay, take the roll, please.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dowby?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, council. Okay.
Resolution number 10, 2019, establishing a brick streets policy in the city of Otomo, Waplo County, Iowa. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number 10, 2019.
And we have a request to speak to this item, Mr. Dennis Willholt.
Hello, I'm Dennis Willholt. I'm a member of the Historical Preservation Commission for Otomo, newly minted, sort of, and also a resident in the Fifth Street Historic District. And I want to thank this, enthusiastically thank the city staff for presenting this resolution to the council, and I would encourage you to enthusiastically endorse it. I would also take a moment to, in addition to thanking you, ask you to consider this as a first step on the pathway to stronger engagement with historic preservation in Otomo. Research shows, all research shows, that when municipalities invest in their historic districts, the city wins, the residents win. So I hope that you consider that in your, in your consideration of this resolution to create a win-win situation for those districts of the Vogal District and the Fifth Street Historic District as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Okay, Kevin, I think you're up to give us a staff summary and recommendation.
Thank you, your honor. The resolution would establish how the city would approach the review of brick street repairs and replacements in our Vogal Place and Fifth Street Bluff Historic Districts. It also outlines how the city will proceed with repairs or replacements if needed, is decide that these brick streets will be indeed repaired or replaced with brick. So entertain any questions any members may have.
Any questions for Kevin?
I didn't have a chance to inquire beforehand, but earlier today, I, someone asked about alleys and if it includes alleys in the historic districts as well, as if they're considered a street or not.
I'm going to defer to our Public Works Director for a comment if you wish to make. Ladies and gentlemen, Larry Seals.
I guess the way we look at that depends on the width. There are alleys that have street names, but just naming an alley a street doesn't make it a street. It would be based on right away with the street. And my understanding is no, that this would apply to two main ones. We would look at other ones that are relatively in good condition, based on options available.
I just wanted to clarify that for the question I had.
Okay. Any other questions or comments for Kevin or Larry?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just a question, clarification sake. Kevin, we talked about this at staff meeting. I think these, these two run together congruently, and that is, when you look at the seventh whereas in the resolution, it states, whereas in instances of repair, replacement, street work within the Vogal Place or Fifth, or Fifth Street Bluff Historic District. And this is the one I want to make sure I'm, I'm clear on, just from a staff perspective. The city will obtain engineering cost estimates for brick, asphalt, or concrete. And then when you look at the second bullet, it references all brick streets located historic districts, and it references then as determined by Public Works. So I'm assuming, and not to reiterate this, and if an item, but in instances such as this, is it still fair to say, as is unfolded in this whereas, that staff and the engineering department, Public Works by extension, they're going to put cost perspectives in front of council and put those before them? And then it's a legislative decision from council's perspective whether they want to do brick, or asphalt, or concrete? Is that a fair statement?
That's right. Public Works would be coming out with engineering analysis of these, one of these two streets, which one we were looking at, and would be informed by council for direction. That would include all three options for repair or replacement.
That's right. Thank you, mayor.
Good clarification. Any other questions?
Are you ready to vote?
Mayor?
I have a question. So I guess if, my confusion, if, if we're putting in this the language to actually look at all three options, in any normal scenario, we would be looking at all three options anyway, if it were a historic district. So I guess my curiosity is, what's the reasoning behind voting on this tonight? If we, if in either case, we would be actually looking at all three options?
Because in the past, the city has not had an actual policy directed toward examination or consideration of repairs or replacements in our historic districts, and this resolution basically affirms the city's support for actually strongly considering as, you know, as a primary option, the brick option, whereas we haven't really had that kind of a position on it before. I do think, though, that the Public Works Director would like to speak to this also.
So before Mr. Seals gets up, though, but doesn't this, in essence, kind of pressure the city to be in the position to look at the alternative of bricks prior to asphalt and/or concrete?
I think it puts the city in a position where you're, as a policy, saying that that is indeed what you're going to do in your historic districts. I think in, in the instance where you're setting up historic districts, you are sort of already committing to historic preservation as an aspirational, as a goal in those areas where you still have these kinds of amenities left. But I'm going to let Larry speak to a portion of that, too.
Okay.
Thank you, Kevin. And one of the things I do want to point out, we have actually in the past looked at Fifth Street, I believe it was 99. We put together a full set of plans. We also looked at overlays. We did very close to what this ordinance says. We were able to obtain a grant, I don't believe it was a large sum grant. We looked at actually putting in simulated vertical sandstone curb, along with an underlayment or a street, and inlay brick on top of it. At that time, it died because of the sheer expense when you compared an overlay versus a full-depth reconstruction plus the brick insert on top. One of the things that, during the discussion, and I don't know if you recall, and I don't have the date in front of me, when I did a presentation on brick streets, different repair methods that could be used, and assigned some cost per square yard for that type of repair. One of the things internally that we've discussed, along with the committee that's been working on this, shortly after that presentation, they started to develop this ordinance, and I'm not sure what their internal workings was to get to this point. One of the things that I wanted to point out, these streets are becoming in such a condition that something will have to be done, will have to review, probably in short order, which means the next couple of years. Look at these streets, develop the cost. I mean, we can do that relatively cheap when you're looking at just an overlay versus maybe curb and gutter, and an overlay versus full width, full depth concrete. The brick gets a little trickier. We don't have enough bidding history to really have a good price per square yard. You know, that varies a lot based on total yardage. But it is something that we would probably do in that project, and again, I think it was in the 99 time period. We even looked at and had talked to, and sent out letters for the adjacent property owners as far as assessment. I think that anytime you would go to full depth or replacement of the brick, that would definitely be one of the funding mechanisms brought in play, would be assessment of the adjacent property owners, just because of the sheer difference in cost of a full-depth concrete street and a brick insert. I mean, you're talking probably at least in the two and a half, three time factor range, I believe is what it was last time. So I just want to make clear that we have done that in the past, and I think that we'll need to closely evaluate that in the future.
So just to be clear, Larry, if, if in the future you did want to, it was decided to do the, the brick overlay as opposed to doing concrete or asphalt, the entire extra cost of that would be assessed to just those property owners, or would that be exposed, socialized by the rest of the community? socialized by the rest of the community?
Most of it would probably end up being socialized by the rest of the community. When you look at your assessment process, you can only assess up to 25% of the taxable value for a 10-year period, and it's a certain distance. I haven't looked at an assessment project for quite a few years, I'd have to go back and make sure the regulations hadn't changed. The last I looked at it, you could go back about 300 feet on each intersection, 300 feet from center line. I'd have to make sure those rules all still apply, but that would be one option that we'd probably bring forth when we looked at, how do you fund this project?
And, and just to be, going back to a prior meeting that we had had on this subject, I think it's probably been a year or two ago at this point, there's, there's some impact on certain city vehicles that would be running over these brick roads as well, that could be damaging to them, for example, garbage trucks, by sheer weight, it could displace those bricks again, even after we redo the streets?
Depending on what design, what a lot of communities have done for replacement of the brick streets, not all, but some, they actually build a street underneath, and then you have the brick inlay. And then, so you have a good base, the, the problem is, the original brick streets weren't really meant for the point loading you receive from the trucks. If you think about when they were installed, the vehicles, they just simply didn't weigh what they do today. So your wheel load per, per axle is quite a bit increased, especially like your garbage trucks. What you might be thinking of, on Vogal, we'd done a sample, I don't remember the square yards now, say 10 square yards, where we just rebedded them in sand, and with the current garbage truck and their front axle load, they've moved again already. The contractor has yet to come in, he was going to come in and do a partial, partial bedding in a different type of chip, like a man's sand, instead of just a regular natural sand, which, oh, they resist movement and rutting a lot better. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions?
Your Honor, I got a quick question for you, Larry, just real quick, and I think we've probably, I've probably asked this before. When we, when you talk of special assessment, do you take the full-depth concrete reconstruction cost of, of the street, minus the extra cost of a brick, you know, being laid down in that base? Or do you take the entire street cost from start to finish and assess that? Or is it just the difference in what is a brick street, the extra added cost for a brick street would cost versus what a full-depth concrete street would cost?
Well, I don't, I think either way, you're going to exceed what you can assess. You could do whichever method you wanted to. I mean, it usually goes to center line, and then based on frontage width of the lot.
Okay. I was just curious to see how you did that last time, and how that was?
I'd, I'd have to pull the numbers. I'm going to guess we did full cost. E-either way, it's going to exceed the, the taxable.
Yeah, what I was just getting at is, we don't, we all socialize the cost of our streets to everybody when they're just a regular full-depth concrete street, but when we talk of the extra added cost of coming back in and laying the bricks down over that base, is that the cost we're talking about assessing?
I think that's what we had talked about back in 99.
Okay, thank you.
Good questions, good comments.
So, obviously, you can see it's an affirmation of an aspiration, but it's a little bit more than that, too, because of course, we're saying in here, not only are we looking at that assessment as a way to pay for this, but we're going to seek all other alternatives, grants, and loans, and of course, there may be individuals within the city that would wish to come in on a project like this, on a private funding level. So, it's duty-bound, to a point of an earlier question, but when you look what we've been doing downtown, with our dedication to historic preservation, with our facade work, and so many other things, it's right along with the direction the city, I think, has been moving in, it's healthy direction.
Okay, is there a motion? Have a recommendation to pass and approve the resolution 10-2019?
Move the resolution is presented.
Second.
Take the roll.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
No.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Motion carries four to one, thank you.
Resolution number 11-2019, approving the purchase of a new ADA minivan for the Atumwa Transit Department. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number 11-2019.
Move the recommendation is presented. Second.
And it looks like Joni's going to take this one?
Yes, I'm going to fill in for Dave Severio tonight. Transit had a minivan totaled last year, and we received a check for $14,983 from State Farm. I think we deposited it today, so we just got it. We now need to replace that minivan. We will be buying a new ADA accessible minivan for $45,417 from Masters Transportation. They are the lowest bidder on the DOT bid sheet, and I would point out that this minivan was quite old. I don't recall the age of it, but it was quite old, and that's why the, the difference in price between the new one and what we received for this totaled van.
Any questions for Joni? Okay, take the roll.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Resolution number 13-2019, approving applications for residential and commercial tax abatement under the Urban Revitalization Plan, subject to review and local assessor. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number 13-2019.
Is there a motion?
Move the recommendation is presented. Second.
Go ahead, Kevin, you have the floor.
I'll entertain any questions that any members may have about our process this year.
Any questions for Kevin? Okay, hearing none, take the roll.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you.
Resolution number 15-2019, approving change order number one for beach renovations, Phase Three, Contract B, Office and Kitchen Remodeling. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number 15-2019.
Move the recommendation is presented. Second.
Thank you. Good evening, Jean, go ahead.
Okay, the City Council approved the contract in the amount of $69,085 to Kristner Contracting of Atumwa, Iowa, through resolution number 205-2018 on July 24, 2018, which includes the base bid and the alternate bid. Due to a clerical error, the actual contract was made out for the base bid amount of only $62,360. Change order number one will correct this error by adding the alternate bid amount of[1038.43][1038.44]$6,725. Other additions are door lock set replacement and keying it to unique master, $691.25. Additional electrical in kitchen and equipment room, $3,726. Add a knee wall in the kitchen, $3,380. And additional painting to include the lobby, $3,011. So the total for change order number one is $17,533.25. The revised contract amount for Contract B is $79,893.25. And the Phase Three contracts amount to date is $309,074.25. And the total Phase Three cost to date, $436,173.87.
Any questions for Jean? Hearing none, take the roll.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Resolution number 16-2019, authorizing the mayor to execute a pre-construction agreement with Iowa DOT to prepare a detour route for US Highway 63 reconstruction project. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number 16-2019.
Is there a motion?
Move the recommendation is presented. Second.
Thank you. Go ahead, Larry.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. The agreement authorizes IDOT to make improvements to city streets within our jurisdiction that will be used as the detour route during reconstruction of US 63. The improvements include the installation of HMA shoulder widening units along Madison Avenue from Mary Street to County Road J-12, which is also River Road. The shoulder units will be designed, let inspected by our Department of Transportation at their expense, and remain as a permanent improvement. The preparation work will also include full-depth PCC patching on Vine Street from Madison to the on-off ramps of US 34. If any substantial failures occur during the, the IDOT use of our local streets during the detour routing, the Iowa Department of Transportation will make the needed repairs. At the close of the US 63 project, DOT representatives and city staff will reevaluate the condition and make a determination if any additional work is warranted. The work that is warranted will be paid by the DOT at the close of the project.
Any questions for Larry? This is a project that has been postponed until next year?
Basically, there's several prep jobs they're going to do prior to start on main construction.
Any other questions? Hearing none, take the roll.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Resolution number 17-2019, authorizing the mayor to execute a temporary easement purchase agreement with Iowa DOT to shape parcel 247 along US Highway 63. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number 17-2019.
Is there a motion?
Move the recommendation is presented. Second.
Thank you. Go ahead, Larry.
The purpose of the temporary easement, which was considered a mutually benefit zero-dollar purchase agreement, allows DOT to reconstruct US 63 from basically the 6334 roundabout south to the County Road J-12. This will allow the shaping of the four-slope grade work to be completed during the reconstruction project. Both of these areas are just really adjacent to the intersection of Mary and 63. They're just in between our pump station, along our city signs, and then along the, the existing restaurant. During that work, the four-slope will get additional fill and shaping and seating. The toe of that will go on to our property. Once done and seated, then it just, the temporary easement is completed.
Any questions? Hearing none, take the roll.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Ordinance number 3150-2019, amending the zoning ordinance number 3088-2015 of the city of Atumwa, Iowa, and a set forth in Chapter 38 of the Municipal Code, City of Atumwa, Iowa, by amending Sections 38-885, 38-876B, 38-793, and 38-887C of City of Atumwa, Wapalo County, Iowa. Recommendation, pass the first consideration of ordinance number 3150-2019.
Is there a motion?
Move the recommendation is presented, Your Honor. Second.
Thank you. Go ahead, Kevin.
Thank you, Your Honor. Well, I was trying to be considerably pithy there a second ago, because I thought this might take a little bit. Of course, sometimes these things do on the planning stuff. I think the best way to do this, since we have so many sections, is I'll start with 38-85. I could read that section, I'm sure all the members have read it, though, and it's fairly confusing, but basically, this was a section that was supposed to be taken out of the code when the code was passed. And having wrote, helped write a few zoning codes, and then reviewed them myself, I can tell you that I've found, even after the fact, there's many things that I missed in my own verbiage in writing a code. So it's easy to do that, when you go over and over and over and over, it kind of all melds together. Somehow it was missed, and now we're mending it by just removing this code section, but I'll entertain any question anybody has along the way here. Are there any questions any members may have on 38-885E?
I have a question, but I'm not sure what it's on, Kevin.
This one is on setbacks on built-up block faces.
Okay. My question is, it used to be, and I, we talked about this when you first came here, and you probably, or maybe it wasn't you, maybe it was Doug. If you want to build onto the front of your house, for instance, a porch, there was setback requirements from the right-of-way line. And I think there was something in the code at that time that allowed, allowed you to do 50% of existing setbacks, something like that. I discovered one on the south side of Atumwa, where the porch was built way out in, toward the street, way out. And what I was told was, that porch is not attached to the house, it's freestanding against the front of the house. So they were allowed to do that. Had they attached at the house, they wouldn't be allowed to do that. I don't know if this is true or not, but I understood at the time that it was. Do you recall anything like that?
No, that was, I think that was prior to me. I've not heard that before. It, most likely, though, in that case, that would have been a porch that was probably, quote, grandfathered in, because it existed before this current zoning quote, code was actually written. This code section is not about that, though. It's about situations where you have different aged structures, like if you're looking down a block, and that block has different generations of structure on it, say, one from the 1920s, one from the 19, maybe say 70s or 80s, and one maybe from the years in the 2000s, when you had the new code. The new code setback on front setback would be only 25 feet in our zone, but back in the day, some of these larger lots, so you'll have homes that are set back way back into a larger lot, homes that are set at maybe 15 feet, and homes that are set at 25. And this code section tries to shore that all up on a visual line level by averaging the difference between those setbacks on those larger lots and smaller lots, and different generations and time periods of development, by making a more consistent visual line down a block. It's a fairly useless code, though, in so many ways, because you have, especially in our city, you have a lot fewer, I don't hate to put it like that, but you have a lot fewer of the larger lots at this point in time, because so many of those have been eaten up by subdivision and build-out over the years. There's a lot less of those. If you, a lot of the older, older structures you see in our city, the setbacks really aren't that much different than what you see already on the 25-foot setback we have now, so.
This particular porch probably was built, I'm going to say, five years ago. Personally, I wouldn't want to see this happen. If, if that is true, if that is the case, it could happen anywhere, and it could make a mess of a neighborhood, and I...
Yeah, I agree. It would be, five years ago would have been before my time, I've been here three years, although I know it seems like forever. But, but, yeah, I would, I wasn't here when that happened. It would be difficult to do that today, because of course, you have to have your principal structure on your lot before you can have any structure, no structure can exist closer to the setback line than your principal structure. So you can't build an accessory structure closer to the lot line than your principal. The accessory would have to be behind that front lot line, or that front building line of your principal structure. So, especially if it were screened in, it would almost be an accessory structure, as if a gazebo or something of that nature. So, I am, I'm a bit perplexed by that case, but I don't know enough about it, really, to say, one way or the other, how that may have happened or not. Now, there is a, a small provision in the code where administratively, I can give an ease, a bit of an ease on a regulation for front setbacks and for, you know, rear yard issue, but those are small allowances, and I actually haven't done a lot, haven't done anything on the front like that since I've been here. And I, I sort of refrain from doing that in most cases, and want to send it to the Board of Adjustments, just because process inconsistency. So I really can't speak to it tonight, I can find out more about it, maybe I can address it later with you.
It might be good to know that, might stop a problem in the future.
Indeed.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
On 38-885.
Okay.
Next, I guess we'll address 38-876, and this is accessory building structures and garages. And basically, what we're doing here is we're outlining what kinds of structures can be used for accessory buildings in our, on our districts or in district lots that, for which the primary use is residential. So it could be in an I-1, it could be in a C-2 or something like that, but the primary use of that lot is residential. And we're, we're saying that containers or units that are not specifically built with intention of being used in such a purpose, in other words, residential storage, may not be used for such in those districts or in district lots, primary use of which is residential.
Your Honor, I got to address this, Kevin, I address this every time it comes up, and we spoke before the council meeting, too. This change here does two things. One, I'm all for, I think that's a great part with the definition. The second item, a quick question, and I'm going to comment, the second one, it sets the maximum size of the aggregate of all accessory structures. So that means garages, sheds, outbuildings, that type of thing.
That's right, detached structures.
Detached structures.
Yeah.
Okay, and that's altogether being limited to 1,200 square feet?
That's right.
Okay, that's what I'm strictly and strongly opposed to, and here's why. And I'm not using myself in the example, but literally, I've been through this, and so that's why I'm speaking from experience. When you have 1,200 square foot, which is roughly a 30-by-40 outbuilding, and as one building, or if you have a 24-by-24 garage and one small shed, you easily eat up that 1,200 square foot.
Yeah.
And when we're talking about people who have a car, or two, or one car and a boat, maybe a four-wheeler, which a lot of residents in the city of Atumwa have, we're basically limiting the size and the amount of space they have to put that stuff inside. Now, what we've already done is said you can't park in your yards. We've said we want our neighborhoods to be cleaned up and organized, and yet, we need test valuation to rise in the city of Atumwa, which is brought on primarily by... assessed valuation to rise in the city of Atumwa, which is brought on primarily by building structures. Yet we go back to limiting the size of an accessory building, which adds value and valuation to a property. And also to that, we also have, I believe, in our planning and zoning code, which I haven't agreed with this part of our code ever since we redid it. Most of it's good, this I don't like. We have a provision in there that limits the percentage of backyard space you already have and can build in.
Yep.
So right there, that's a limiting factor on keeping 20 buildings in somebody's backyard. So we've really fixed the problem, and then we've overdone it and limited citizens by having buildings in their backyard. And, you know, I think we're just overstepping our bounds and saying, you know, you can have, you know, we're limiting what folks can own, and then we're saying you can't store it. Now, I know that there's a way to go around it. I know it's the Planning Board of Adjustment. I've been through it. I went and presented my case. I said, you know, and my case was the same back then as it is today. I have some extra, you know, vehicles and things and hobbies that I want to do inside. I don't want this stuff scattered out in the neighborhood. They said, that's a great idea. We don't want it either. They passed my, you know, variance. But my question is, why do we need them to go to that trouble? You know, and I know we try to match what other cities do and stay in line with standards. I understand that. But once again, you know, when we settle, you know, a standard for how many water units we use for a swimming pool, we're setting those standards way too small and limiting citizens to what they can do. We can't in one hand say that we want valuations in Atumwa to rise with search our general fund. We want to have citizens to be free to do and have what they want, and then limit them on the size of stuffs that they can store it in. I don't think it makes any sense whatsoever. I know it's not your fault. I know it's the way our code is written, but I hope that someday we look at this, and we either give some more wiggle room there because we already make up for it with our backyard percentages. We already limit what people can do there. So my two cents, my comment, it drives me nuts every time I see that part of our code. Maybe in the future, we could look at it on, or continue our conversation about it, maybe change that in the future.
No, yeah, fair statements. And that's, I probably should have took both. This thing does do both those. Wasn't trying to not show that. I was just going to take one on at a time, but you're right. That's probably, I think the other one, everybody pretty much agrees with on principle. The second part of it, of course, as you say, we are going from, and the regulation you're talking about in the rear yards, 35% of your rear, not more than 35% of your rear yard can be taken up by all these accessory structures as a rule, and that would be drawing a line at the back line of your house, you know, backyard. And so originally, your intent in your code originally was to just say, everybody can have 1,200 square feet. Now, when we, when the code came out, again, I guess, you know, for whatever reason, the language it turned out was, you can have 1,200 square feet, or you can have what is the basic footprint of your structure. And of course, questions of fairness and questions of equity going to come up in those kinds of situations where it's like, you can have this, or you know what, I'm going to be arbitrary, you can have this, too. So we decided to just go back to what was the original intent of the language and say 1,200 square feet, or you go and you get, I do believe it's actually a special use kind of deal here instead of just a variance, but regardless, you go to the Board of Adjustments, and you get allowance greater than what would be allowed. And remember, these are with detached structures, meaning you could come in with a home and do a two-car or three-car garage, any size you want with the house you're building because it's attached. And then you also have all this detached allowance. But now, having said all that, I agree in so many, you know, since, the sense of the matter, I agree with you. You do have the 35, can't take more than 35% of your backyard. However, when you look at questions, again, of fairness and equity, some folks have a bigger backyard than others. So 35% of one guy's 50-foot, our one lot is not going to be anywhere near the sizes of the guy, our 170 lot with the rear backyard, of course, being wider, maybe even deeper, who knows? One guy's got 80 feet deep, another guy's got 100. Next thing you know, you wind up with the same equity kind of questions. Now, I, and just to remind, it's not a variance, it's a special use allowance. Basically, you have to go to, to get it. So it's a little bit different than a variance. There's similarity, but a little difference. And, but certainly, in a quasi-districtal board type of situation like with a board, a variance board, Board of Adjustments, they're going to be looking at it differently when it's a special use situation rather than an allowance that's given through a variance, right?
Right. What bothers me, though, about that, that, that board is, they are sacrosanct. They make the rules and that, there's no appeal process.
Yeah, they make a decision, and that's the end of it. Unless you go to, you know, court, you can go to just court.
Unless you go to court, and so that's why I brought it up. You know, if that could be slightly expanded to make for a bigger building and still let them do their, their special uses, it's fine. But once you get a no, you're done. We can't overturn that. They're their own board.
You can remand a decision that the board has made back to them for further consideration. And if that doesn't come back into your satisfaction, of course, there can be a court situation that occurs from that, but...
That's a lot of work.
This is original intent, kind of. The intent from doing this was original intent. So if there's a larger allowance that, that could be suggested or that could be debated on the floor, certainly, we could entertain that.
We'd maybe look at that going forward. I, you know, I don't know what that is, so I'm not willing to make any kind of motion or make any move. It's not my area expertise, and I know that. But what I'm just saying is, maybe we can continue conversations and look maybe some of what other cities do, and hopefully get that up to a little bit bigger standard.
Yeah, we're, you know, you're looking at a, yeah, a fairly, a two-car garage here, a basic two-car garage allowance here. But yeah, I don't disagree. That's something that perhaps could be considered further down the road.
Thank you.
The other ordinance we're looking, next ordinance we're looking at is 38-793. Or I'm sorry, are there any more questions about that, that last ordinance? Okay. 38-793. The current version of this code under custom manufacturing, which most predominantly would be undertaken like in a C-3, I think, and of course, I-1s or I-2s. Establishment is primarily engaged in the use of site production of goods by hand manufacturing within enclosed structures, involve the use of hand tools, use of domestic mechanical equipment not to exceed 2 horsepower, or a single kiln not to exceed 8 kilowatts or equivalent. An 8 kilowatts in equivalency of British horsepower would be approximately about 8. I think it's maybe 8.7. This category also includes the incidental direct sale to consumers of only goods produced on-site. Typically, uses include ceramic studios, custom jewelry manufacturing, which is on the uptake these days, and candle-making shops. So this code clearly possibly written in 1842, but we sort of redid the language to this thing and, and said establishments primarily engaged on-site production of goods and hand manufacturing, and just said use of mechanical equipment not to exceed 10 horsepower and the use of hand tools. And also included some, a little bit different language, is a little this antiquity to it that would, I think the most important part of it says, consumers of goods or products on-site as well as goods incidental to on-site production or ancillary to said production. So it's a, it's a little bit wider in its allowance, but I think it also takes into some of the, takes into consideration some of the activities they would typically see today in custom manufacturing. But I would entertain any questions about that.
Yeah.
Good.
Questions?
No? Oh, well, this is going faster than I would have thought. The next one would be, sorry, 38-887C. And the current language on this says, is C, and this concerns fences that are required by opaque fencing that's required for buffering. And you'll see this in instances where we have more than four parking spots that are adjacent, in a parking lot that are adjacent to a lesser intense use, like as, maybe there's a C-2 use, and there's six parking spots in the parking lot, and it's adjacent to R-1 uses. Basically, more intense uses coming into adjacency with lesser intense uses and having impacts that need to, that require buffering in our code. Further buffering, opaque buffering. And the way it was written originally, it said, the finished surfaces of any fence shall face toward the adjacent properties and street frontage. Now, what that means is that a wood fence, for instance, which is generally the most popular choice that we see people make, it's immediate, you don't have to grow like as in a green fence, it's just there, six-foot wood fences. The posts for that fence are going to be behind the face. They're not going to be facing outward toward the streets or toward, or I'm sorry, yeah, the posts are not going to be facing outward toward the streets or the adjacent properties. The finished smooth side, the milled finish side would be facing outward. So the quote, pretty side of the fence would be facing outward to adjacent property owners. So there was a opaque fencing that was necessary, and there was no undue impact on a visual or aesthetical level for the neighbors. That is being changed to say, the finished surfaces of any fence shall face toward adjacent properties and street frontage in instances where six-foot opaque fencing is utilized in establishing an opaque barrier pursuant to screening standards established in Section 38-914B1. The fence surface that is of a finished design and that establishes opacity shall face toward adjacent properties and street frontage. And what this basically means is, if opacity, establishing opacity is the intent, then the finished face that is establishing that opacity must face outward. And we ran into this problem with one instance where a project, I think, unintentionally, basically had a finished face of a fence. The fence was a double face essentially, and the, the side of the fence that established opacity, that finished side was in, pointing to the inside of the lot. However, the outside of the fence that was facing toward the lot had boards mounted upon it that made it a finished surface. Because the best example I can get is, if you didn't, if you were an R-1 lot and you didn't have to have opacity, opaqueness, you, it wasn't about seeing through the fence, and you just put up a three or four runs on a fence there, and you're, you know, you're growing a little bit of clematis or something on that in the summer, nice little fence, because it wasn't about not seeing through it. That's a finished fence with those boards on the outside of it. So that's what we ran into, and so we wanted to be a little more specific in how we addressed that, so we made sure in the future that certainly the finished side on the outside was the intent of the original code.
Is it safe to say, Kevin, that you ran these by the planning and zoning, and they endorsed this?
Yes, we had a unanimous approval of members who were present for these rules, regulations, and stipulations.
Any other questions for Kevin? Okay, are you ready to vote on the first consideration of this ordinance? Take the roll.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dowby?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
We have the second and third consideration, pass and adopt ordinance number 3150, 2019.
Is there a motion?
We have the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dowby?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
Ordinance number 3151, 2019, amending Chapter 18 of the municipal code of the city of Atumwa, Iowa, entitled Health and Sanitation by repealing Sections 1851 through 1855 and enacting a substitute and lieu thereof, including new subsections 1850 through 1862 concerning massage therapy businesses. Recommendation, pass the first consideration of ordinance number 3151, 2019.
Is there a motion?
We have the recommendation as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Johnny, are you going to take this?
I am, Your Honor. This ordinance deletes the current section dealing with massage therapy businesses and creates a new section providing for licensing for those businesses operating in the city limits. All existing businesses would be grandfathered in as far as fees are concerned. Background checks, including nationwide checks if the therapists are from out of state, would be required at the expense of the business. For new businesses after this year, the license fee is $75 with an additional fee of $25 for each person performing therapy, up to a maximum permit fee of $150. Photo IDs would be required for each therapist to ensure the licenses for that individual. An appeal process is included if the applicant is denied the license or if the license is suspended. Prohibited acts are also described in the ordinance. Chief McAndrew, who is strongly endorsing the ordinance, spoke with the licensing personnel at the state level and was encouraged to expand our current ordinance to assist with enforcement and reduce illegal activities such as prostitution and/or human trafficking within the state. And I would point out that there was a couple other, I met with several massage therapists last week and made a couple revisions from the previous ordinance that I had passed out to you at the last meeting, specifically dealing with insurance and a couple of other things to make sure that they would be operating legally and professionally. They did indicate, I did make a revision in the ordinance that provided that background checks would be done by the city if the state didn't do that, and we did confirm that the state does not do background checks. So we are going to follow through and do that, and that will be at the expense of the business. But otherwise, I think, we, I think this is a good, good ordinance, and I think it's needed in our community.
Okay, we have several people who've asked to address this item. Emily Pearson?
Hello. I am Emily Pearson. I am currently a licensed massage therapist with the state. I did attend Indian Hills, have now been a massage therapist here in the community for nine years. Own barefoot bodywork and massage in the community. We've had that business now seven or eight years, I'm not sure, a long time. When we were first presented with this ordinance, our initial reaction was mildly appalled at the sexual language that was included in it in regard to our profession. We are licensed through the state. We go through 1,000 hours of training, hours of, and hours of hands-on time, and it felt like, as a community, you were telling us that that was enough, that's not good enough. Never mind that you do 24 continuing ed credits. I understand that this is a growing problem in the community, in the state, and I do agree that there needs to be something done about it. I don't like the fact that my profession is associated with this in any way. Massage therapy has so many benefits for so many people that can't find relief from pain any other way. And with this ordinance, I think that if I were a therapist just moving into this community and I read this ordinance, I would not want to work in this community. Johnson, after this was proposed, which is where this ordinance came from, found a way around that language. And they did that by under definitions, not including the definitions of sexual or genital parts. And because, as I was understanding, that's really hard to prove anyway. You have to send an officer in undercover, you have to do a sting operation. However, that's found out, that is very hard to prove. So by eliminating, eliminating that part, you're saying that just strictly if they do not have a license in this city, which is super easy to prove, you go look up the record, they don't have a license, they don't have a state license, then it's over. They're done. You can get them out of the community. And you don't need to include language that makes therapists, or me in general, speaking from my perspective, feel like you look at my profession and you assume that I am one opportunity away from becoming a prostitute. And that makes me very uncomfortable as a licensed therapist. I worked very hard for my reputation in this community. We all have. We hold ourselves to very high standards, ethical standards that we were trained to handle. We do regular continuing ed on ethical standards, how to maintain our distance from clients, how to uphold professional relationships. That being said, I do feel that with the fees and all of that, I understand that there's cost involved in tracking the legitimate business owners. I do feel like, though, that it places the burden of proof on the legitimate people and the legitimate businesses, and the cost of that on us, too. So you're charging us for being licensed professionals. I do think that it needs to be very clear that this ordinance is not about licensed professionals, and you guys have listed that in. It says this is not intended to discourage legitimate licensed massage therapy. However, like I said, if I were just coming into this community and read this, I would not feel like this was a community that I would want to partake in. I would feel uncomfortable by the fact that it is on the records that you feel the need to tell me what unlawful acts are permitted when I am a licensed therapist and I know not to do those things. That is all I have. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Emily.
I would point out quickly that that language is in our current ordinance. It's not any new language. It's been in our ordinance for decades.
Mayor and council, appreciate this opportunity to speak to you.
Mayor and council, appreciate this opportunity to speak to you. I'm one of the people that brought this up before you. I am a member of the Network Against Human Trafficking that is seeking to implement this ordinance statewide, Emily. So, I appreciate what you're doing, because this is not against the legitimate business. The city of Des Moines has been cracking on the illegal massage therapy that uses human trafficking victims. Those businesses are now scattering across the state. And I just didn't want to see one of these come to Atumwa. So, this is not against legitimate, this is not to attack anybody's reputation. The hope is that we can get people out of the human trafficking, trafficking situation. And I know this is a small segment of that, but it's something that we can do now. There are currently ten cities in the state of Iowa have passed this ordinance, or a version of this ordinance. And there are about ten or eleven more that are considering it. One other city has considered it last night, and I didn't hear what their vote was. But this is, there's just a growing idea of, we've got to stop human trafficking, and we need to do whatever we can do to do it. And that's my intent for bringing this forward. There were three of us that brought this forward, and that's our intent. We need to do whatever we do to get people out of the human trafficking situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. George King?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, city council members. One of my many hats is that of a personal trainer, corrective exercise specialist. I work at the YMCA volunteer with persons who have Parkinson's disease. I have invested in massage therapy, trigger point therapy, acupuncture. The sad reality is that many people will not research who they are going to, if they are licensed and legitimate. And another sad reality is that there are those who are licensed, who know definitions, who know right, wrong, and still choose to bring harm to individuals. And as a resident of, of a city, an ordinance like this would make me feel like, this city is helping protect me as well. Although, the weight should be on my shoulders to find out where I'm going and investing, is it legitimate? I, I would want my profession to be held the highest standards, and I'm willing to put whatever I need to into that as well. And I'm appreciative of what was shared. Clearly, she is as well, like, this, this matters to her, and she is taking all the right steps to be a value contributor to our community's health. So, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Joni, or any of the people who presented?
I, I have a question for Joni. Did by chance you investigate the other cities that have passed this, and see how their ordinance is written?
It's very similar to the, there's been a draft-type ordinance that's been circulating around the state, and this is very similar. I did make some revisions to it, but very, very similar.
Fees are basically the same.
Yes.
I'm, I'm definitely for this a hundred percent. I think.
Can I approach again?
Yes, you may come up.
The ordinance that I brought to you in the first place came from the city of Johnston. Matter of fact, I, I have had Joni look at it, and theirs was a variation of another city's. So, everyone's kind of looking at each other's, and, and doing that across the state.
Thank you.
Des Moines passed it a couple of nights ago.
Yes.
Um, Joni, knowing what Emily said, and I appreciate all the work you've done on this, and I definitely think it's something that needs to happen, but I'm wondering if maybe we could look at the suggestions that were made on some of the language to kind of find that balance. You know, I think we need to do this, and I was ready to vote for it, but I also see at least three massage therapists in the audience, none of which I use personally, so it's not a bias. But I'm wondering if maybe we can do just kind of one more due diligence on some of the language, to try to make sure that we're not detracting from new people coming in the industry, who are, who are doing what they need to do. But also, I think we do need to pass, you know, something, but maybe do one more look again, on how we can find that balance.
I, I understand. I did meet with Emily and Yolanda last week, and also a third person briefly, and did take into consideration their suggestions, and made those suggestions, incorporated those into the ordinance, and gave them a copy when they left, and indicated to them, if there's anything else that needs to be addressed in those, please get those to me by Thursday before noon, when they would do the city clerk. And I didn't hear anything further from anyone. So, I'm not sure what additional revisions I would make.
Mr. Mayor, just, just a question, if I may ask Ms. Keith on this, but it seems to me, and, and council, I'll, I'll defer to you on, on what happens in terms of the next steps. But if someone, as an example, feels they are violated, they are going to then make a police report, a report in some form or fashion, then to, let's just say, a law enforcement agency, that they're going, they're going to do that irrespective of whether or not we have this ordinance. It seems to me, and I'll, I stand to be corrected, this ordinance adds some sustenance, then, to someone, if, if indeed, they, they can prove, is it not? But even absent this, that does not mean that those acts where someone's violated, those fall by the wayside. There's still going to be a law enforcement component or investigation, would there not?
There would be.
Thank you, Mayor.
May I comment again to that?
You have to ask the mayor.
Make it brief, yes.
So, really, that sounds like two different issues. One is a client coming in, if something is done to them that they were not a willing participant in. Another is someone being brought in as an intern or assistant, or something along those lines, who is not a willing participant. I would just want to clarify that.
Okay. Okay, so, what's your pleasure, council? We have a motion on the floor to consider the first reading of the ordinance, and it's been moved and seconded. Are you ready to vote? You could vote it up, you can vote it down, you can amend it, you can do whatever your pleasure is.
For one, I'm ready to vote, I don't know about the others.
Okay, let's take the roll, then.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Unanimous decision. Thank you very much, council.
We have the second and third consideration pass and adopt ordinance number thirty-one, fifty-one, two thousand nineteen.
Move the recommendation as presented.
Second. Take the roll.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Item K in our agenda is a communication from the public and, and council, and I'd like to call on Councilman Mark Rowe for a couple of comments.
I just wanted to mention really quick, like, I have sat through, I, I'm not sure if the public knows this, but our executive director for the Visitors, Convention and Visitors Bureau, Andy Whartonburg, has put together a customer service training package that he's been going out and, and delivering to a lot of local businesses as of late. It's something that him and the Convention and Visitors Bureau has worked pretty diligently on, and has refined a, a good package, and, and has been going out and delivering on that. I've had the good fortune of sitting through that a couple of times now, and it's been very good, very effective for the, the areas that I've sat through with. And I would just make the plea to all of the, the businesses in Atumwa that might be in the customer service field, especially those that, that are dealing with outside traffic into Atumwa, but also for those that are typically only dealing with internal city customers, to contact Mr. Whartonburg, and, and host, host his training with your employee base. It's very good, and there are a lot of things that he brings up that would not only put a positive light on the city of Atumwa with the customer service that, that we, that we put out to those that come to this community, but also, I, I believe at the end of the day, it would probably be good for your business as well. It, it'll get return business. So, I just, again, I, I just wanted to say hats off to Mr. Whartonburg, the Convention and Visitors Bureau, and for the businesses in Atumwa, too, please consider utilizing his training.
Thank you very much, Mark, and congratulations on being selected as one of the chefs this past week. Twenty-five men who can cook, so we know we're going to get some good cooking out of you now.
For a price.
I'd also like to give a shout out to our city crew for the great job they did with snow removal two weekends ago, and this past weekend. I would hold them up against any city crew anywhere in the state, and we've had a number of outside visitors in town recently who recognize their good work, and I think we sometimes just take that for granted. So, it sounds like they may be out tonight working already. We also had a great Martin Luther King celebration this past week, and I want to give a shout out to Jeff Hindred, who coordinated that for the city. And we had great participation, young people and experienced people. It was well done, and I think, again, something we need to celebrate when you look at our diverse community here. Lastly, I would like to make the comment for the public, because we certainly get a fair number of phone calls and emails about the St. Joe project. We were informed this week that Blackbird was in town, and they have decided to terminate the contract with Elder Corporation, and will be negotiating with another construction firm to continue the demolition of the old St. Joe building, and that should start in the next couple of weeks. So, we're pleased that there is still some movement, they are still very committed to getting this project taken care of. And lastly, I'd encourage citizens to get online and look at the POCO survey. We want to get as much participation as possible from citizens, and this is your chance. And I think, as we get into budget, and also the location of a hotel at Bridgeview, you'll have a chance to give us some feedback. And so, learn about POCO, and, and how you can take advantage of that tool, that'll help the council make the best decision for the community. Anything else from any councilperson or staff person? Sounds slippery out there, so drive safely and have a good night. We'll have a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember Strebe?
Yes.
Councilmember Berg?
Yes.
Councilmember Dalby?
Yes.
Councilmember Rowe?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.